Yeah.
I read, I looked at what you talked about on that one, it's the whole length of the house just about.
Uh, you don't want to try for a recommendation tonight?
Yeah, we can, but what we'll have to do, uh, if we get to that point, then we'll have to have a public hearing on it.
Right.
With a rigor checks on them, or whatever we all decide tonight on there, so.
Okay. Yeah, unless I'm missing something, I think we can come to a pretty simple conclusion.
I agree with you.
Pardon me?
I agree with you.
Okay, I'm, um, we are streaming and recording.
Okay, I'm just showing one more minute, so I'll watch my official time on my phone and then we'll, oh, here it is, five thirty. So I will call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum and hopefully Sam will be able to join us if he hasn't already. But I would first ask everyone to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our March two twenty twenty one meeting.
I just noticed one thing on this, on page five, I believe it is, or yes, page six. Oh, it was corrected, it looks like.
Yeah, Robert a lot of times corrects things before we meet.
About the date, until it was originally April second, but it says April sixth now, for the next, it's on page six.
Great, okay. Anybody else have any comments or corrections? Okay, so.
Well, it looks like it. There is, there is another one in there, it's on page five.
Okay.
Unless he corrected that one. Yeah, it says April second, it should say April sixth on page five down here.
Yeah, it's on bottom there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see.
Robert, did you get that?
Yes, I, I noted and I'll change it.
Thank you.
No problem.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes from March two twenty twenty one meeting?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion from Karen, a second from Leanne, um, all in favor, say aye. And I think that was unanimous, Robert.
Thank you.
Um, our next item under new business is agenda item A, a discussion on the size of utility stands slash platforms. Um, I guess maybe Tony, are you gonna do a short presentation for us?
Chairman Smith and members of planning board, for some time, uh, staff, we've gotten a lot of comments about the, uh, HBAC stands, not only from the planning board, but maybe from citizens of rights of each question, the size of them. One of they have to have eight by eights and the things like that as far as the size of the poles, but, uh, as you can see over time, these things have gotten larger and some of them, it's because of a building codes. Uh, prior to two thousand, Duke Energy didn't require a set of steps to them. So now there's a set of steps that the contractors and homeowners are having to put all those to read the electrical meter. So that's a requirement, so they have to put the steps on there. And then the stands have to be at a certain, uh, or the units have to be a certain distance from windows and other things and your generators now. Now you have not only generators, you have pool equipment and heaters, so the list just keeps going and going and going on these things. On the first page seven there, I put, uh, put a description of a principal structure and we put the setbacks typically. The stands typically go, if you look at that diagram, they go into the side setbacks or the rear, never see them in the front. You see them all typically on the sides of property lines and they, the stands can go four feet into the setbacks. Um, you see the definition of equipment platform over time in one fifty five point two ten on page eight and page nine. We added number twelve that we added buried tanks and tank strip to the house. So there's twelve items now that, uh, that can be in our setbacks and I'll just go over them. Roots and gutters can encroach two feet, uh, the utility service platforms can go four feet. Of course fences can encroach in those setbacks, driveways, uh, some parking areas, sidewalks, landscaping. Number seven, accessory buildings can go in there and then grade level walkways, no more than thirty six inches on number eight. And number nine, uh, talks about beach walkovers up to a certain point are allowed bulkheads. Retaining walls, no graders than thirty inches and then buried, they'll be gas tanks and freestanding gas tanks allow into those setbacks. So you see your setbacks, you either got to conform a lot or non-conform a lot, you got to conform a lot, the setbacks are fifteen feet, non-conformant is seven and a half. Some items you could do, uh, we put some options here, you could limit the number of stands. I've seen on a couple of the larger homes, I've seen two, one on, one on one side and one on the other side. I've seen some of those on the south end. Uh, could we, uh, limit the length of the stand? We may can. And then do we want to allow in, in the past, I've had a lot of calls about, well, can they enclose the bottom of the, of the stands? Is that a good idea, a bad idea? But I think it's still a good idea for letting the screen it up top. So if you're a neighbor, you're not, maybe it baffles some of those, uh, the noise or whatever, so. And then we, uh, Robert come up with some communities here ordinance benchmarking about what other communities do. We see that Cherry Beach doesn't allow anything into that setback at all. Those others do allow some type of approach into the setbacks.
That was some good research, Robert.
Yeah.
It's true, each deal that they, where do they allow? I mean, you can't have an air conditioner? Well, evidently they incorporated the design of the house.
In the backyard or something of that nature.
Yeah, so I've, I've looked on Google Earth and it's hard, hard to tell, but I know the inspector there and talked to him.
But to clarify, because you just used the word backyard, that's a setback, just like the side setback.
Yeah, I don't think they allow them anywhere.
Wow, what a way to put it, man.
Well, they have to design it, you know.
Like within the building.
It's.
Footprint and then it's tucked away underneath the roof or something.
Yeah.
As far as, can I just say one thing, as far as the people wanting to clo- enclose them? Everybody, and I know a lot of my neighbors have asked about enclosing their, theirs. Everybody that has asked me in my neighborhood to enclose them is to use it as storage, not to put units under them to, 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 to quiet the noise. It's about storage of kayaks and surfboards and stuff like that. So the enclosing thing to me.
And that's one that can easily be done if we decide, if y'all decide that, that's something that can, you know, we can say you can't enclose the bottom at all and that's something we can do.
Tony, uh, you're in the seven on page accessory building, so how is an accessory building, uh, not the same as enclosing?
Let me see.
Would your page eight say?
Number seven.
I think they're, they're permitted, but they still have to meet a certain setback. They have to meet either the seven and a half or if it used to be a non-combustible building, they used to allow it to go to the line. And those buildings are, uh, limited to a certain size also, the accessory buildings. So they would be, they'd have to meet certain setbacks, so, um, but that's in there where they could be in a, in a certain area there.
Just ten by ten, isn't it?
Yes, a certain ten to ten or ten by twelve.
Yeah.
But non-combustible, yeah.
But then what they store in it is combustible.
Right.
So it doesn't matter.
What is an accessory building? Help me out with that.
Like a storage building, like a little storage house, you'll, you'll see them in Harbor Island a lot. Like a wooden shed or whatever.
Okay, so non-combustible.
Well, if it's to the property line they used to allow, but if they're meeting the setbacks, they can just be wood or whatever.
Oh, okay, okay.
We also had stop and think about the, like fires and if there's a, these, everything raw on top of each other down here, if there's a fire, you know, outside and people, the fire department has to get between the houses, it's just gotta be plenty of space.
Then you think about the fence, that fence is gonna be there too and other plantings, that's something.
Well, it's kinda like that, 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 that text amendment we did for the gentleman on, um, on my street on, on, uh, South Luminary or Wayne, however you wanna look at it. And he didn't wanna attach and he, he's already got all his fences up now.
Right.
So he comes along and builds a stand. And I'm sure he will, I haven't looked at the new house, he's getting ready to start on his other house, it looks like. Um, I just think it sounds to me, it's gonna get very crowded between the houses.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it already is.
It already is there and, uh, um, so we gave you some options unless you all think it's, can think of any more options we should do there.
Could we, uh, talk a bit about what, what we're seeing as the problem? Obviously it's different than it was back in, you know, over a decade or so. What inherently is the problem that's coming from it other than it's different?
Oh, what, what I see is the problem is, is fire and you know, it used to be, I don't know if Robert had a picture in there, you know, the old timey stands, I mean, it was a stand like four by four. For one air conditioner.
Oh, that's quite a bit long.
And now it's, you know, this thing next door to me is, and David Singotti was the one who brought this up to me, because there's one next door to him. He makes a very good point and one of the things I wanted to ask the group tonight and Tony and Robert is, Duke Energy, as you know, they think they're God and they wanna dictate everything. David Singotti said me, said to me, he said, don't they have ladders? Why can't they use a ladder?
Their people.
Pardon me?
The liability to their people, they will, they will not.
But now they have remote electric meters, they put one.
Yes, exactly right.
They don't have to get up there and read them, they just remotely read them.
They don't even get out of the car, do they?
No, I don't think they have to get out of the car anymore. So maybe it's something we go back to Duke Energy and say, can we eliminate this requirement because you're the only one that needs it? The AC guys, they'll, they'll take a ladder, so I don't know why their company's got the liability, but they use ladders all the time, the air conditioner people to maintain them.
A lot of your electricians that will put your panel boxes on the outside that you have to be able to reach.
Right, I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, they have to have those in a certain area to get to the electrical panels, that's, that's a requirement there.
So is, is that the state, the code for installation of electric panels is now?
Well, and the flood height is, the flood height makes you raise them, so that makes you have to have a set of stairs.
Okay.
And then for the left, well, you've gotta have a certain area in front of to work on the panel.
Right, so between page, uh, twelve and then page fourteen.
Right.
There's two electric panels.
Right.
Yeah, fourteen stepping way up there, sorry, fourteen is a low one.
Right.
So we really can't, based on these pictures, do anything more than say they're in different places these days.
The only thing is, is you, maybe you could dictate for a new house or something like, okay, brand new house.
Yeah, I mean, there's other things like the, electrically, I think the last picture on fourteen, the bottom one, I mean, when I have to raise mine because it crumbled, um, I had to have those, uh, circuit boxes, breakers put up at the same place where the unit is, so that seems like. So this is a new installation with the old wiring or something.
Right.
Can I just say?
Go ahead.
One thing, like that, houses are getting bigger and bigger and, and like Jim, Jim was saying, back in the better days, you had a four by four and you had one unit on. Now the houses have got two and three units, some have four units, the houses are so big and they're gonna require bigger and bigger stands. I mean, where does it, where do we, where do we? I mean, a four by fours, I would hold for air conditioning units.
Well, next you, Jim's got five.
Yeah, this one next door to me and, and living next door to it, I mean, they did a very nice job. I can't really say that I'm complaining about it, but to Tony's point, they enclosed the bottom so they can use it for storage, but they're not enclosing the top to, to shield, shield the noise. Now those units are already running and they're, they're not that loud, I mean, they're not gonna bother me. And when they're running, it's, their, their deck's back there too, so they're gonna hear them, but what is going to be noisy, I think, is the pool equipment running out there because they're putting pool equipment, a generator and five air conditioners. And I can tell you from looking at it, they're not gonna use the whole platform, so they've made it bigger than they need.
Generators is a new thing, uh, in general, these permanent installations, I don't have a sense of how noisy they are.
Very low, I have one.
Yeah, they'll test too.
We tested and what, you know, I, I try to be compassionate to my neighbor who, he doesn't live there permanently, but I run it on Thursdays. I don't run it early, but I don't want it late, and I run it like nine or ten o'clock in the morning, does exercise for thirty minutes. Um, and I'll say.
Weekly or monthly thing?
Week, and it's, it's an albatross, because when they first put it in, nobody knew what they were doing, it was one of the first ones they put. They built the stand because it's too close to the, um, boxes, you can't have it that close. And now it's even higher because we had to put it above the meter boxes because they didn't know what they were doing and they put them on the wrong end of the house, so.
Electricity goes down, so it's gotta be.
You know, it's, it's not fun, it's, we've laughed about it being an albatross, I think I'd do the.
Coming back to the base question I have is, so can we delineate what the problem is around this, maybe a set of problems? Seems to me one of them is noise. You get four air conditioning units on one stand, well, you know, I have, I have two from mine and two from next to me and then behind me, there's another two for each one of those. So, you know, we basically have eight air conditioning units and depending on their age, they're just, they're like seagulls trying to kill each other, the noise, so.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Okay, so we have seven and a half setbacks and it's gonna be noisy, but if, but noise is something. Maybe the direction is screening, if screening can help.
Well, that's what we did with the generator, we screened it to help with the noise.
Yeah.
Also to help with the wind, because in most places they're enclosed, the generators are like in little houses. Because what you don't realize is those big generators, when the wind hits it, it bogs the motor down and it will actually shut the generator off. And when that happens, it blows the breaker and your generator will run, you have to come up there and redo it. So it's, it's, it's a dice roll, they need to be more enclosed, if they're big enough to run your whole house.
Can generators be, uh, installed inside? I mean, you, you said earlier, you know, the houses are getting bigger.
They have exhaust.
Sort of furniture, furnaces and, you know, all that kind of stuff has to have that.
Well, the people across the street, they're redoing their house, or there's something happened with it, but they have an air conditioning unit that just squeals. They're not living in the house while they redo all their hardwood floors. I feel so bad for the poor neighbors next door because that thing squeals all day long and I mean, it is horrible. They need a new air conditioner, but they're not there, they don't care and I'm wondering, so this is what's next to you?
Yeah.
To me, it's the reverse, they should have had screened around and left all that up.
Yeah, but then I'm thinking, they're gonna store underneath it regardless, so I'd rather look at that wall with a bunch of junk under it. Like kayaks and.
That would occur.
I have to tell you, I personally, I don't, I think cosmetically that looks better enclosed and just like this is one on the last page, just open and.
But it's, it's the huge size of it that is the overwhelming issue.
Right, I mean, but.
It's not full now and it's probably overbuilt beyond what they actually need.
Right.
With the rest of the noisy units.
But I don't know how you, I mean, every house on the beach is a different size and requires a different number of heating and AC. I think if you, uh, I don't know, I think that's hard to control and hard to enforce and.
Well, Mike and Tony can review them when the drawings, the plans come in for approval, for permits, but my thought was, just as a suggestion is, okay, you build a three-story house, so you're probably gonna have three air conditioners. So what if the ordinance said you can have, build a stand for three air conditioners in the setback? If you need more, then you're gonna have to inset it into the house.
Yeah.
And that way you don't have a fifty-foot stand, you have, you have to have probably about, about a four by, three by four. Uh, and then you have to leave, uh, I think twenty-four inches in between each unit. So at maximum, you're gonna have like, let's say a fifteen or sixteen-foot stand. If you have a generator, you have to inset it, you have a pool pump, you have to inset it. Um, if you have five air conditioners, you're gonna have to inset the other two. Um, technically, what these people have really done is added four hundred square feet to their footprint, two hundred on the bottom, two hundred on the top. And, um, you know, if I had thought about it when I built my house, man, that would have been nice to have two hundred square feet of storage. But, uh, back then, I, I was under the impression we weren't supposed to store underneath there at all.
Well, if it's open and open storage and, and not completely enclosed, there's no issues, but.
Right.
Everybody pushes the envelope, so.
Yep, yep, so that's the problem, after they're built and Tony's inspection is done, then they go in and close and, you know.
That's the place to let your bike thrust.
Is that how three livable stories, just two?
Uh, yeah, three, yeah.
Three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Flat roofs.
That's, that's it.
All they're doing.
Everybody doing flat roofs so they can get.
Doesn't that house, doesn't that, that house, the, there's a household Salisbury, not, not Chris Knott's house, but a little bit farther down, looks very much like his, but bigger. Aren't there air conditioning units on the top for the flat roof?
We've seen some on the, on the.
I think his, I'm almost positive, I walked past him when I did the loop, I think, I think his units are on the top.
There are some that are on the roof, yes.
I think she's talking about, um, Jim Radcliffe's house, yeah.
The one that looks like, there's the one Chris Knott's.
Down there.
Pardon me?
There'd be nothing of fire, fire protection, yeah, they could be just four homes, you couldn't do anything else, could you?
No, you couldn't get anything else through there, um.
Be hard to perch a ladder on it.
That would just be.
Uh, you know, I just, what Kitty just said, we ought to get Glenn's, uh, comments on this.
Yeah, that's true.
Who? You could hear that?
Uh, Glenn Rogers, get his comments on. Um, because I, I know I told everybody this story, in fact, it happened four years ago next week when that fire happened on Pelican. They had to fight that entire fire from the backyard. And it was at night, so.
That was scary.
Why do you have to fight it's all in the back, was it in the back of the house?
It started on the back of the house.
Started on the back of the house and, um, Sam Prophet told me that the final report was, um, what was the, the technical term that, uh, improper disposal of smoking apparatus? In other words, I think the guy let, left his lit cigar out there on the back porch.
Had he been there?
No, he was gone.
Einstrom. Einstrom or?
No, on his deck, so it had to be.
I remember watching that.
Furniture cushions or something.
Well, this thing in this picture by your house looks like a part of a house and it's a big, big thing sticking way out there.
It's fifty feet.
It doesn't look like a stand, it looks like a whole roof.
It's fifty feet long.
Yeah.
How many feet is that from the fence?
Uh, they are four and a half feet, right, you know.
If it's attached, it looks, I mean, I.
So the setback on this house is, is seven and a half feet?
Yes.
Yeah, both of our setbacks are seven and a half feet and actually I think on their plan that when they, you know, because they have to send the neighbors what they're gonna build, I think they set it back eight feet.
There's that they have four there, there must, must be an eight foot.
Yeah, it's.
The only reason why they built that longer was for the storage space.
Yep, yep.
What are those rooms?
And my other concern, Tony, um, because I kinda questioned the carpenter who was putting it up, you know, we have to build those, um, infiltration basins alongside the houses. And now those eight by eights go down into that infiltration basin. So I don't know how that works, like.
Can you explain what the infiltration basin is?
Storm, stormwater, uh, only new houses now, they do, have to do a stormwater plan and typically the rainwater is from the gutters will come down or through another system. There's a underground, a rock bed and with pipe, things like that that it goes to.
You probably had. Yeah, you probably had to put one in for your house, yeah, what it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is if you have an existing house with a certain square footage of impervious surface, now you're gonna build a new house and you're probably gonna have more impervious surface, then you have to put the, the drainage field in. And they usually squeeze them in along both sides of the houses because that's the only place they can put them.
And do you have to be guttered?
No, there's some, it depends on engineering design, sometimes they'll do the, uh, some type of slope or whatever.
I mean, does, does the roof have to have a gutter?
No, it doesn't have to, because most of them do, but if not, it falls, if rainwater comes out, it's supposed to fall right over the trench, so engineers will design it like that.
They end up adding gutters to mine to make that happen.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, picture, I'm a picture, I was looking at the pictures at the bottom, the third one, the third one, so you got the pictures of the guy who's built the really nice, pretty, whatever. See the third one down where there's a fence and then a, uh, enclosed area?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. I think thirteen, I'm not, see, I'm looking at it on my phone, right, it's right before the picture of the mint greenhouse. Is it, like, so where is that fence right there?
What was the question?
My question is, there's a, there's a picket fence right beside the enclosed area, see it?
Yeah.
Look at the space between that fence and that enclosed area.
It should be, if that's their fence, should be, if that's the side, it should be a seven and a half foot setback, so that's four, hopefully that's three and a half. That's a new house there that's just been built all around.
I mean, that's a, that's a, it would just maybe, or maybe it's just the angle of the picture.
I think it could be the angle too, that's, that's.
That is tight. That's a better, that's better, yeah.
That might be one.
Still, I'd hate to have to see six or seven or eight firefighters running between.
Right.
Age thirteen, it's a brick.
Yeah, she's talking about the one at the top of thirteen, Robert.
This is a better, this is a better view up with the porta potty.
Leanne, is that the one?
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about, that's a tight fit right there.
Is that a new house?
The, the brick house is the one, we go past it, that's a new house, Harbor Island.
Wonder if we should go out there and measure it, one of the things that could happen.
Survey on it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we, yeah, every.
With the fence?
Well, we did a survey on, on the, uh, stand and the property line, so we got a finished survey on all of those.
I just kinda wondered, Tony, if maybe that fence is encroaching.
I, you know, I don't know, I don't know if that's the neighbor's fence or if that's the new house's fence.
Looks like the neighbors.
Space to squeeze through there.
Looks pretty tight. Has he wanted to have blind lookouts because they, they have to get through there with, with equipment on their back and stuff, so.
I take it that's, uh, also covering the units above it, that's why.
Yes, that one's screened bleefully at the top.
Yeah.
And I, and it looks nice and I, I'm, I'm totally okay with that, it's just, there's very little space between that and that fence. I think.
Robert, were these pictures that you took?
I may have taken this one, I don't know, Robert, I, I think I took these and I, I took it from my truck, yeah, that's my truck, so I took it at an angle.
You did address?
I've got a survey for it too, I keep thinking of the address right now.
Yeah, Tony doesn't issue a building permit or an occupancy permit until he gets a survey.
We got plenty of surveys on.
Yeah. So my guess is I bet that fence has probably been there for years and it's encroaching and the neighbors don't care.
Could be.
I bet that's what the issue is.
Well.
Move back to something you said, Jim, about, um, based on the, some aspects of the house, so many floors or how like you decided to feed the requirements for a house. Using that as a guide for what would be the linear. Using that as a guide for what would be the linear footage of a stand. Um, I just don't know enough about it. I think it makes sense though, that all these ancillary things that are happening should be carved out of the space rather than just keep. Go, and, and when something shows up that, maybe there's a few unit things yet to be installed on it, but it just looks in these pictures like it could also accommodate, you know, a party as well as all that stuff. It's just so large. And then the other thing is the noise. I mean, when you get that concentrated pile of equipment, um, and then add to it a, uh, uh, generator. Somehow that just doesn't feel fair to the neighbors.
And a gas tank.
As Jim says, they run the new air conditioners are pretty quiet. It's kinda hard to go out there and say, they, that noise really bothers me. Do you draw a generator in the picture? That's a whole different story.
Or like Cheryl said, her neighbor's air conditioner is old. So when these, these units get seven or eight years old and they start grinding.
I didn't take my neighbor's breakfast when the hurricane hit. We didn't have power, so you had to listen to my generator. Let him talk. I, I powered his refrigerators. I did the name, you know, I mean, that's what you, he has to listen to it. I'm waiting to drop whatever.
Maybe that's.
I often wonder, does, what does it sound like to the generator or? A lot of times, when, when the smaller units.
It's obnoxious, but you know.
Probably music to your ears because you've got power and nobody else.
Well, tell me the last hurricane hit, I fed the entire street and kept everybody plugged up, cause I mean, they gotta deal with it, so I might as well be neighborly, but.
Cheryl, exactly what's your house number? I wanna write that down.
What was the question?
What's your, what's, what's Cheryl's house number?
Cheryl's house number? Are they running an extension cord over?
No, I'm just gonna pull up.
Well, you know, part of the problem, while we had to leave during Florence, or did, were you the ones that stayed?
No, we, we were interested, but we did not, but the, what was the last storm?
Dorian, you probably ran it for Dorian.
We did, and we, you know, we, we ran about ten hours or so, and so we, you know, took everybody, you know, try to do our part with everybody, so.
Yeah, so what is your address? I know where she lives, but I don't know the.
I'll pick you up next time, Jim. Since you know where it is, I'll pick you up.
Well, um, where should we take?
We, we still got some questions, I think. We, we, we talked with Lynn. I think we, I talked to the mechanical inspectors in Haver County to say, okay, what distance do we have in between the units? So we can get a good idea there. And the other question is, is, um, we could require the, the pool heaters and pool equipment maybe to be located underneath the house somewhere. Instead of on the, on the stand itself, or we could, you know, if we wanted to, we could say your generator will have to be on your, your deck of your house somewhere. If we wanna go that far.
Or it could be on the side of the house, but inset, so it's not out in the.
If, if you go to a generator, but all these bigger homes now have to have a generator because all the wood in there, in these houses have to be conditioned. So that's what they're saying. As soon as, they cannot, these nicer homes cannot be without condition.
Well, I have a question for you on that one too.
You better have the heat.
Well, but see, when we had to evacuate for Florence, we were told that we had to turn off our power and our gas. And our water.
And that's what I've, we've heard.
So now, if you, Cheryl, have to turn off your gas, then your generator's not gonna be running when you're gone during Florence, so therefore you're.
You almost don't want it to.
No, you don't.
But you wanna have it come on as soon as it's all over. The problem was, we were gone for a whole week.
Right, we couldn't get back on now.
And something triggered it and it crashed and all my refrigerators, I came home, it just melted everything. It didn't work. When it's, if, if we had to do it again, we will have a generator on a trailer. We will trailer it over when the hurricane's over, cause it's, I'm gonna tell you, it, it, we laugh and call it the albatross around my husband's neck cause it's a great idea, but in practice, the Tesla wall, and that's what we've talked about. Has anybody thought about putting that on the island?
What's that now?
The Tesla wall.
I haven't heard, I mean.
Or, or the Generalak wall. See, there's a.
Tell us what that is.
Now, now Tesla has come up and Google it and it's the neatest thing you've ever seen, but it's panels that are two feet wide, or maybe four foot tall, that are only about this thick. And they charge via the solar panels on the roof of your house, or you can charge them with your own electricity. And if the more you want, you stack them. And then that will operate your house if you should have a hurricane and it's all.
I think I've seen them online, things like.
It's called the Tesla wall or Generac.
It's called the power, power wall.
Power walls, Generacs.
I'm gonna check into that.
There's one more thing to put up on the, uh.
At least it's not something that runs. Somebody mentioned.
Robert's got something right there, he just pulled something up, Robert.
And it's actually a little concept, but what I gotta figure out is, you know, for wherever we get there is, does that gotta be above the, you know, there's so much you gotta deal with.
We got that one inside the house.
I suspect that's expensive if you were wanting on the ground floor.
It is, okay, it is expensive to begin with, but I will tell you that generated albatross and repairs. We had a fan blade brushed off and done even better. It's like a car motor.
But my, my point is, nobody's gonna put it on the ground floor. You're gonna put it.
I'll tell you, and I know we're getting off track a little bit, but we have to tell everybody this story because it does go along with, you know, trying to limit these stands. My insurance company was not gonna pay for my floors because the power, they said the power was shut off, off premise, meaning that the island power was shut off, off premise. And so they weren't gonna pay for my, my floors. I said, no, 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 I have an email from the town of Riceville Beach that says, we have to evacuate, mandatory evacuation, and I have to shut off my electric, water, sewer, not sewer, but water and gas. So the power was shut off on premise, and that one little word got them to pay for my floors.
Why would they have not paid for it if it was off, if the town did it and you did?
Because insurance companies, in my opinion, are crooks. Who reads the seventeen page fine print insurance policy when you sign up for the, for the, you know, wind and hail and, you know, all this stuff? One little word, they were hanging on and I, I got them. They do have great lawyers.
There, people are saying that they have to have generators because the, the woods that they've used in the houses, these are exotic woods or?
All kinds. You, you've got exotic woods and, uh, I saw one the other day, it's the first time a few years ago where, uh, this was a new house just so, and the ceilings were all wood. And somebody, we believe, or they believe, left the door on the oceanfront open. And it, they were gone for a month or two. They come back and the whole ceiling was just twisted, just like somebody took their hands and twisted the wood. And it was from.
These new doors that they make aren't all like great. They can, if you get a big storm, that thing flies it. And I've come twice in, down my kitchen door standing there. And I don't think it's people, I think it's the wind.
I'm trying to think, how, how do we factor something like, I call that bizarre in my world, that's bizarre, that you've got this, that this room needs work. Tender loving care than seems it should. And if that has a knock on effect with a demand for more aircraft carrier space to put your stuff on, that just seems.
Yeah, but you gotta also think about existing homes too. What do we do with existing homes that run a generator? They happen a lot too.
I mean, can't you use verbiage after we obviously get input from the fire chief and Haver County inspectors? Can't you just do, use the verbiage that it's limited to, uh, the size of, you know, the air conditioning units and a generator? And that, let that be that. I mean, just thinking, I know we're not doing that tonight, I don't think, but I'm just, I mean, therefore you don't have all this extra space.
I, I agree with Jim that you need to limit the air conditioners to one floor floor. If you wanna do more than that, huh, you, you.
But I mean, you really can't have, can you have more than four?
They have five on that one in that picture. Four in a split unit fifth one.
And, uh, Zimmer house a few doors down, they have five, they have the same thing. Now their, their stand isn't that big. What's their address? Sixty or something like that? They have five air conditioners, pool equipment and generator, but their stand isn't that big.
Right, so that's just an extra.
I think they took advantage of.
And it, it happens and, um, so we can ask about the steps, try to get a, a direct answer from the energy on that.
Ask them if we can eliminate them, cause the meters are remote reading now.
Space between the units dimensions and I'll get with, uh, Chief Rogers on that.
Are the steps used for repairs also then? Used for repairs. I can need your AC work done.
No, the, uh, air conditioner guys, I think are gonna tell you that they can't, see, they can't, see how those air conditioners are lined up, Kitty? They can't get, they could get to the.
Typically get a ladder, I think, and work on from the ladder.
Cause they can get to the first one, but the other ones, they gotta put up a ladder. And mine, mine are that way. I mean, when my house was built, you know, I've got that, I didn't want that stairway. And you, I asked you, I said, do I have to put a stairway in? And you said, you've required, and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, I don't have them on my air conditioners, but I will tell you what, they don't realize when they start stacking like that, you wait, you start having to get in and replace one. So I've had to, we have three, one on each end, but haven't done the middle. It's gonna be a booker, you know? And I, I always think they need to have it enclosed. Or not enclosed, but. Particularly if they enclose the bottom. I, I, I don't think the bottom necessarily has to not be closer, but I think if they enclose the bottom, they need to have to scrape. It looks awkward with all those little things sitting up there.
What are you, are you screening for aesthetics or are you screening? So that must be some design component that would have to be.
There are, that work can be taken, yeah.
And you're gonna have to have enough, I would think, room in between the screen and the unit for someone to get in there, do work if they need to.
Well, either. Removable.
Some of them with removable panels, so they can just.
Run the generator with them. They're hinged panels so they can get to it.
Whatever we do, I guess we have to understand that it may have a knock on effect, uh, including being lifted off in a storm. If it's a kind of a, not fixed in strong enough, or not made of the right materials. And if it doesn't mitigate sound issues, then it was only aesthetic and.
That's true.
Yeah, the top, top has to remain open, for sure. I'm gonna go get me a part time job and buy one of those, um, power walls.
Someone told us about it, it's a, we had just fixed a generator with, you know, pretty hefty price tag, but I tell you, it's a neat thing, particularly that it generates itself.
I'm gonna check in and I'll let everybody know.
But it's safe to say that, um, are we, are we supposed to make a recommendation tonight? Or can we, are we allowed to say, let's take some time and look around? We are, we're all famous for riding around and looking at stuff before we, maybe we all need, or you know, individually, whatever, just take a cruise around the island and really get an idea of what's going on before. And then come up with some, maybe each of us come up with our concern, or a list of three questions, or two questions, or whatever. And our concerns, after riding around the island and looking at what everybody's got. Old Indian.
No, I agree. I, I came in here thinking that we could make a recommendation, but now I think we all agree, we need to check with chief riders, we need to check with Duke. Tony's gonna check the, uh, air conditioning. The county, yeah, the county inspector, yeah.
And I've been curious to see, with a heating and air conditioning company, would they have a recommendation of how much space they need to get into service and do they see any limitations with?
If they would respond, yeah. We could do that.
And they maybe could tell you, hey, this is the absolute minimum space that a unit could take. You, you know, this is what you're saying, you know, okay, three units, cause it's three story, you know, could, could maybe give us some recommendations as to size limitations.
Kind of like asking the engineer to work on the engine that he defined versus the mechanic.
Um, and just as a side note, Tony, I understand that one house down the road from me on Pelican's gonna have the swimming pool on the roof.
Yes, that was before the change to our ordinance, yes. We, we changed our ordinance to include that, but that house was permitted eight months ago now, so. The new one says, if you're willing, you can do that, you're gonna have to count it as deck area.
That's right, that's what it was.
We, you know, we didn't say you couldn't do it, we said you can do it, but it's gonna be counted as deck area. But yeah, that's.
Uh, it's in that Neil's house. Next door where to Elise and Robert used to live. Yeah, you'd probably know him from the hospital. What was I gonna say? Oh, um, yeah, I guess the steel's not gonna rust or is it?
We'll see and somebody will say.
Yeah, we'll see rust coming out of the house eventually.
That's okay, does that have a bathroom or shower or anything?
Well, unless, they have the outside showers, but no inside showers.
Yeah, the house sits on the corner. Is it not circle? It's like it stopped, the one that's on that. It's just like.
I, I don't know if it's material or they can't make decisions, I'm not sure. I talked to the owner a few weeks ago.
Lagoon and linen.
Yeah, right there in that.
Cause they're. It's real close to it and it's huge.
Well, we did.
More than.
We did a couple more adjustments on that.
It's kinda like a point.
If they work, they'll do a triplex. And then they did, and then it's.
Oh, I know which one you're talking about.
And like they got the beams come out for the decking, but they've just sort of like stopped. I haven't seen anybody working on that house in probably.
The concrete, uh, building at the, uh, small building at the, or, you know, line lock.
Oh, yeah, I know the one you're talking about.
On East Fayetteville.
Yes, yes.
So that has a roof deck. Spiral. Is, and I think it has a pool somewhere, but I'm.
Has a pool on the, when I was, it may be elevated up eighteen, it was one of those that uh, was permitted for the change, yeah, it does have.
Decking on two floors and then a pool that counts with that.
We wouldn't now, I mean, it would have if the orders had been passed before they, uh, got their permit.
So this building at hers is permitting it. What an attractive.
Do I?
What an attractive building.
Which one are you talking about?
Tony can't opine to architectural.
That they built next to the Zimmers. That they, nobody ever moved in and now they're redoing all that.
That's on the other side. It's on Oxford Street.
I was always, I was always told it was Larry Trump's house. It's a monster that had all these security cameras when it's being built and it's completely enclosed. It's on the ocean front.
Oh, you're talking about this one?
Yeah, that was Dino's house.
Oh, that was Dino Delanter's house? That's, um, um, no, let me, George Roundtree's daughter and son-in-law's house. He's a trader.
Construction, what, and then they, what have you done? What street does?
It's, you're talking about the house on East Asheville Street. It's ocean front.
Oh, you're talking about Eddie Beedenbach's house.
Maybe. It doesn't look like anybody's ever moved in. Well, it was under construction, now they've come back and they're ripping part of the house off. And there's water damage all underneath the house. And it's enclosed with a chain link fence all the way around.
No, that's not Eddie's house.
We're talking about this one, that big brown one.
On, on Fayetteville Street. On, on Fayetteville Street.
She's not talking about the brown one, I would think, are you?
Yeah, I need to interject it. Are we gonna, hey, are we gonna do, are we gonna do anything on the stands? Cause.
That's.
Yeah, we'll have to.
In the street.
Keep discussion going.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
So we're gonna continue for more discussion.
I'm sorry, Leanne, we've, we've drifted off.
I know, we drifted off and I'm, I'm, I'm going to a dinner meeting. Um, so I'm just wondering if we, are we gonna make a record? Sorry, I just, you gotta listen to everybody, but are, are we gonna, just, what are we doing?
Well, if I could, uh, see if the group wants to agree to, uh, of course defer this, continue the discussion until next meeting. And.
But, but with the understanding that we're all gonna kind of look around and see what's going on on the island and maybe come up with some questions and concerns.
Yes, that, check with Duke Energy, check with, um, the county's inspections, um, and also, the fire chief. So those, we'll do those four things and gather up more information to further the discussion until next month. If everybody's in agreement with that, if everybody's kind of shaking their head, I don't.
I wanna look around.
Yeah, we're just discussing.
Yeah, I think we need to make.
I personally wanna drive around and look around and see what, why, what if and what is this? That's what I'd like to do.
Great, alright. Um, I should have one other quick question, Tony. Were you gonna look into the, or did you get a chance to look into the, um, artificial turf?
I haven't asked that question. That's on my list. I was going to get Catherine.
I had a concern if it's pervious or impervious.
I will send an email in the morning.
That's a great question. Sometimes they concrete underneath it and sometimes they don't.
But even that matting, I'm wondering, because you know, they don't consider gravel parking lot pervious. They count it as impervious.
I think it's installation on that artificial turf that I think it varies.
Check us. It's going down everywhere.
It is. My neighbor, the people that redid the house behind me, put it down.
My landscaper wanted to do that. Can you believe a landscape?
They, they make money on coming back and maintaining your yard.
What did you say, Robert?
I said he doesn't wanna mow.
Yeah.
Was Sam on the meeting?
I didn't see him.
He is in the meet, he is in the call.
He is here?
It does not show that he has a microphone though.
Okay. Hi, Sam. Um, does anybody else have any items they wanna bring up or? Um, oh, and I did, Leanne, I did check, we checked when we met with the town attorney.
Yeah.
About the floating restaurant and the fact that they're advertising it as private.
Yeah.
And he said it is going to be written into the ordinance that it passed board of all the men, that the ground floor is still open to the public and the top upstairs is private.
I've just, I, the only reason it came up is because I have gotten so many phone calls. And, um, I just, people, you know, I, it's, it's not my business how they advertise it. The proof will be in the pudding on the opening day.
Well, I think, I think the people that they sent the email out to, to join the quote unquote Commodore Club, it was touted as a, as a private restaurant because the top part is, so I think.
Yeah.
I know the bottom part is public.
I know that.
I'm not sure that was in there, but.
Well, Brian Eats said it would be in there. You know, he hasn't written it yet.
Right.
So, yeah, they can do, they can advertise it. That's fine. I mean, I just know that I've gotten phone calls. That's their business. That's their problem, so.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn so Leanne can get it in.
Yeah, right.
Do we have anything else?
I, I just, I just, I'm not ready to do anything. I, I really just wanna go around and look at everybody's stuff and take my own pictures. And sit down and look at them myself and say, what if this happened or could this happen or what are my neighbors doing? And what are the people at the north? And that's what I wanna do personally.
Sounds great. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Great.
You know, my house doesn't have all that massive junk and, and it won an award for the, for the air conditioning and everything.
Really?
Yeah.
What kind of award?
Like it was.
The home builders.
Yeah, it's a home builder.
Print of homes, right?
Award for the, the quality of the air conditioning and the insulation and all that. And it's not one of those massive things down the side. It is not, it's not a house in three stories either.
Right, but your house is very attractive. I like that a lot.
The, um, it amazes me.
You can come in.
I'm, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that that's three stories livable. Cause I wouldn't want that, but you know.
Well, the third level.
I guess the flat roof does it.
It does, yeah. The third level is just one room where you, but it's like a room that's got a little kitchenette up there and it actually, then you walk out onto the roof deck and, I mean, it doesn't do anything for me, but it's, it's, it's a big house.
That's like four and a half units on that thing. So they need, I mean, that has to be massive to need that many units.
Yeah.
Tell me what happened to this, because the Parker house, it's big, tall, thin, concrete went down.
It's somebody's, they got staying in there, I think, you mean?
The, the one that's under construction is just sitting there, concrete building.
Oh, you're, you're talking, you're talking about the one right before you get in the bin.
Before sunset.
Before sunset.
Yeah, somebody's staying in.
Somebody's living in that thing?
Yeah, it's finished. It's not gonna be, that's finished.
That's finished?
It's finished, it's a finished contract, yeah.
It's like a prison.
Yeah, it's, it's finished.
I thought it was like.
His other oceanfront house is finished too.
Yeah, he was finished that one.
But I saw the for sale signs gone.
Which one now?
The one that's oceanfront next to, um.
That was a build one. It wasn't a.
There's one on the south end that are finishing up right now for.
Right next to the apples house.
Yes, yes, that's the one they're finishing up.
So, well, the for sale sign's gone. There wasn't for sale.
I think it was, cause Bobby Redden sold the, the lot to whoever was building it, I thought.
Um, excuse me. Was that, was that a motion to table the discussion or a motion to adjourn?
That was a motion to adjourn. We did not do a motion to table. We actually all agreed to, uh, continue the discussion at the next meeting.